All rise for the invocation by Pastor Tony and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this time that we can gather in prayer. And I'm reminded this morning of Benjamin Franklin, who was considered to be the most or least religious of our founding fathers, and yet, as they gathered to write our Constitution of these United States, he reminded them that they should pray before they began their discussions. And so, Father, this morning, I thank you for the opportunity to be able to pray over our county supervisors. I ask you to give them a spirit of love and concern for all of their constituency, Father, that the decisions that they make in these meetings would be of benefit and not to burden each of the citizens. Father, I ask you to be with our entire county. I know that these times are difficult, but we can look to you and find hope. Father, help each one of us to look to our neighbors and try to find some way to be loving to one another, because we have a great country, and it takes each one of us to do our part. And so, Father, again, I just thank you for all the wonderful things that you have done for us as a country and as a county, and it's in the wonderful name of Jesus we pray. Amen. Thank you, Father.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Tony.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to call for an executive session to be held on November 15th, 2021 at 9:00 AM?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. No further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Committee of your legislative reports. Supervisor Langenfeld.
I attended the October meeting of the Mojave County West Basin Water Use Study Committee last week. It's a good meeting, a lot of dialogue, and getting close to the recommendations being due at the end of the year. We'll have one more meeting in November. That's all I have. Thank you.
Supervisor Goode.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I attended the Workforce Development Meeting telephonically, and it was a swell meeting. Thank you.
Supervisor Bishop.
I also attended the Workforce Development Board in person, and I also met with Craig Sullivan of the County Supervisors Association to receive my briefing for taking office next month for the state association.
Supervisor Angus.
Nothing this morning. Thank you.
I've been dealing with the people at the feds with the new legislation and federal obligations or financial obligations to the counties, and as of today, full funding for county payments in lieu of taxes is on track for 2022 as part of the regular congressional appropriations process. The government is operating on a continuing resolution through the 3rd of December. The final PILT number will be determined at that time, but it will be at least as large as last year's levels. Secure Rule Schools funding is contained in this $1.5 trillion in bipartisan infrastructure packages as written. It permanently ends the 5% annual funding grant down and restores funding to the 2017 levels, or $250 million. That's compared to the $193 million in 2020. Secure Rule Schools Title I represents 85% of the payments. That's a 50% split with schools and 50% for roads. From the remaining 15% of SRS provisions in the infrastructure bill also ends a 2011 freeze, which prevented counties from reallocating between Title II Resource Advisory Council's approved projects and Title III Firewise projects under the control of the counties. For 48 of the 50 states, the measure also automatically provides for approval of RAC member appointments if the forestry service chief fails to act on those RAC recommendations within 30 days significantly. Funding SRS also protects PILT funding in the Rocky Mountain states because of the way PILT formula is written. That's all I have. County managers report?
No report today, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
All right. Call to the public. Townsend, I can't, I'm not sure of their first name. Penelope, maybe? Okay, Townsend. Is there a Townsend here who wishes to address the board?
Good morning, Chairman. Board of Supervisors. My name is Penelope Townsend, live on Golden Gate Avenue in Kingman. I'd first like to thank you for getting the ball actually rolling on the new animal shelter. It's wonderful. Very grateful to you. I just wanted to speak briefly this morning regarding something else that's been on my mind quite a lot. I find that most of our laws in Mojave County dealing with stray abandoned mistreated animals not actually sufficient to be a deterrent to these people who do these things. I also realize how hard it is to enforce, but I do feel and hear from a lot of people, the enforcement is not what it should be. It's supposed to be a deterrent for the people who do not obey the law. If it's not addressed by animal control, whether it be in the city or the county, then these people are just going to carry on dumping their animals or mistreating them. Also, I feel very strongly about making a law in Mojave County that will demand that everyone except registered breeders have their dogs and cats spayed and neutered. You all know we have a horrible animal problem here in Mojave County. I do realize the big question is going to be, how do you enforce such a law? We will probably have to have an animal control officer that deals solely with this. They're too busy, the regular animal control officers, picking up these stray dogs and what have you, so they're not going to be able to deal with it. If the dogs are picked up, they only get six weeks to get their animals fixed, and then they have to provide proof to animal control officer who will be dealing with this as in the form of the vet's paperwork to say, this has been done. If they do not conform, then they should be fined. If the dog gets out again and they still do not conform, then the fine should be higher. Sooner or later, they are going to realize it's going to be cheaper to fix your dog. I know cats are a different problem, but mostly dogs, I guess it's going to be, they're going to find it's cheaper to fix the dog than keep paying a fine. I understand that some people will decide not to keep the dog, but then it has a chance to get a home where it's not getting out all the time, and it would be fixed and vaccinated. This would enormously cut back on the amount of animals and the costs, of course, that the county has to deal with. Places like Low Cost Veterinary Clinic and myself personally, Saint down in Bullhead City, and other private persons are trying very hard to encourage people to fix their animals and to help them if they cannot afford to do so. This money comes from donations from the citizens who are your constituents. This is a huge animal community here. It seems like every other house has a dog, and we'd really like to see these sort of laws passed and an amendment to the current laws, or at least better enforcement of them.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Chris Rodardi.
Chris Rodardi, Kingman. When tyranny becomes law, rebellion becomes duty. These words attributed to founding father and third U.S. President, Thomas Jefferson, are as relevant today as they were during America's infancy, possibly even more so. That said, I have opted to quote Mr. Jefferson exclusively in my three-minute allocation of time, as I believe it is crucial everyone hears and applies these sacred words to the discussions of the board today. When once a republic is corrupted, there is no possibility of remedying any of the growing evils but by removing the corruption and restoring its lost principles. Every other correction is either useless or a new evil. There is no justification for taking away individuals' freedom in the guise of public safety. Whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness, it is the right of the people to alter or abolish it and to institute new government. When the people are afraid of the government, that's tyranny. But when the government is afraid of the people, that's liberty. The issue today is the same as it has been throughout all history, whether man shall be allowed to govern himself or be ruled by a small elite. When you abandon freedom to achieve security, you lose both and deserve neither. A true patriot will defend his country from his government. I think myself that we have more machinery of government than is necessary, too many parasites living on the labor of the industrious. Government big enough to supply everything you need is big enough to take everything you have. The course of history shows that as a government grows, liberty decreases. The two enemies of the people are criminals and government, so let us tie down the second with the chains of the Constitution, so the second will not become the legalized version of the first. Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
Thank you. Scotty McClure.
I guess I'll start with the Fair Board. Pastor, I'm going to ask you to please give Steve a chance to run this thing. You know, it's something new. You don't start a business and just walk into it and say, success. But I think you've made the right choice to have the Parks Recreation Department run this. Give them a chance, because this has been run so bad in the last few years. You've run it in the ground, you guys, or somebody has, the Fair Board. I'm still requesting an audit, whether there's anything to audit or not. Somebody needs to be held responsible for this. And what they have is their ideas. They're going to sub, rent the buildings and sublet them. You can't do that according to some of these laws here. That's against the rules. They need to turn out 200 grand that they've got in the bank over to you guys, to Steve to run. And I also think that anybody that's on the Fair Board, and Tim Woods, should be barred from employment there after January 1st. Now, I'm going to try and get Steve together with the depays with that rent. They spend more money there renting those places than anybody. So you need to see what's fair on that. If it's 400 a day, they have to rent it for the whole week to set up. That's $1,500, $1,600, and they're there Sundays cleaning up and getting out at noon, by noon, and so they're paying for that day, too. So you need to see if this is fair to them. If they raise my prices, they charge me 10% for anything I buy there, plus tax. They're paying taxes. I'm paying taxes there. What is fair there? The other thing I want is this TV thing. I asked to sign up for number 16. I don't think it really, this is just a procurement, so it really shouldn't be polled. But damn, I lost the things. Kingman's got 37 channels. Lake Havasu has 33. We've got 26 in Bullhead. Moccasin's got a few, four channels or something like that. So we're all paying the same rate. They have taken away all our channels without notice. They should give us a 30-day written notice in the paper in our bills, which you can't do that. We don't get a bill. We pay our taxes. All of a sudden, we have six shopping channels. They've taken off MeTV HD, a Spanish channel. They don't have a Spanish channel on here anymore. I guess the Spanish-speaking people don't pay taxes in this county. Why don't they have a channel? You guys have no idea what the hell the rules are, the FCC rules from. I have the rules here, the LO, local origination channels. You need to put this on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
We could have more in a minute.
Brian Ware.
Supervisors, county manager, department heads and staff. My name is Brian Ware. I own several properties in Mojave County. My concern today relates to flood issues around my 40-acre private property within District 5, specifically the Santa Fe Ranch Stage Coast Trail's POA footprint. Since 2018, I have attempted to address issues with the POA's president, Mike Savillo, POA manager, Melissa Layton, District 5 supervisor, Ron Gould, Public Works and Development Services with the concerns I have with the county, state, and federal floodplain and grading ordinances not being followed by the POA. After recently replacing my driveway for the fifth time, I moved forward with a complaint to Development Services regarding the continued water diversions and destruction to my property. After review of my complaint, the POA has been found in violation of not having required permits. This POA has gone relatively unchecked for an unsurmountable amount of surface water diversions on the FEMA floodplain for over 12 years. The POA has violated ordinances adopted by the county via the Arizona Department of Water Resources and FEMA requiring permits and engineering for all grading over 100 cubic yards and any water diversions created, including discharge locations of diverted surface stormwater. Several POA members and other private property owners have also attempted to make complaints over the years. Some are now concerned about building a home, and a word, the flood insurance writing, may be jeopardized by the unpermitted floodplain activity. Although we understand the POA has recently obtained a permit, we are unaware of the parameters of the permit, nor do we feel having a current permit addresses the responsibility of the POA for its lack of prior permits or engineering oversight, which has led to damages. Seemingly, the county failed to enforce compliance. The lack of oversight through permits and proper engineering will significantly cost the taxpayers in the Dutch Flat area if this responsible parties are not held accountable. Taxpayers should not have to foot the bill for the property damage and potential environmental damage caused by the poorly managed private enterprises. Our concern is the county taxpaying citizens becoming the funding party to this POA's violations and remediation of those violations going forward. The responsibility that should be placed on the POA as per ARS Title 48, Chapter 21, and ARS Title 45, Chapter 8. We believe the county has a fiduciary responsibility to seek liability from the POA, not the taxpayer. The irresponsibility and mismanagement on the part of the developer, POA directors, and management company should not be held to burden the taxpayer. The District 5 supervisor should not be party in creating a taxing alternative to a voting private POA that he is a member to in his district and which he decides on aid in financial recovering from poor management and an inability to function properly. This issue could possibly amount to an environmental disaster that will become the financial burden of the taxpayers instead of the violating party. The untold damage done to the Dutch Flat area by the POA's mismanagement should be more concerning to the POA and to the District 5 supervisor than any one special event application consisting of enjoying the area's off-roading opportunity, camping on private property, and recreating with family and friends. Why did this POA wait so long for required permits? Why did the county wait a decade past the 11th hour to enforce? Corruption, cronyism. The citizens can't read between the lines or read minds. I guess if it walks like a duck and it quacks like a duck, it must be a duck. I'll pause.
Mr. County Manager? County Manager, may I? Oh, sorry. This is the second time this issue's been brought up. Can we put it on the agenda for discussion for next meeting?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus certainly will be happy to do so. Thank you.
Jeff Esposito.
Good morning. There are two east-west corridors that serve all of Southern Golden Valley, Highway 68 and Shinnamuck. ADOT is totally screwing up Highway 68 by putting cement medians down the middle. These have obviously changed traffic patterns. They block nine streets from accessing east and west directions. They even block some businesses. Imagine living there then being screwed over like that. This is causing havoc with Golden Valley citizens, making their lives more difficult and stressful. I'm sure that the fire department and the sheriff deputies love it, too. Good job protecting your constituents, Wilma. Shinnamuck was paved to Colorado. Funny coincidence that is a street that was paved through Legend Ranch to the mine. Me smells graft and corruption. Meanwhile, the road department is completely ignoring the unpaid miles 3 through 5. They don't even do any maintenance on them anymore. They are so washboarded, so bad that a person needs to wear mouth protection to save their teeth. That road is part of the Peace Trail. Visitors experience it. Can you imagine what they think and report about it? Get this road fixed. Let's go, Brandon.
Jennifer Esposito.
Jennifer Esposito, Kingman. After last week, I'm firmly convinced that your attorneys should really hire competent legal counsel before they speak. By the way, name-calling is absolutely free speech. You should know that. But viewpoint discrimination at call to the public is illegal under open meeting law. Since we last spoke, the Health Department sent out a press release encouraging people to subject their children to the experimental gene therapy clinical trial, not because children are at risk, but to get our numbers up. Let's get our numbers up, which has nothing really to do with public safety. As I said last time, one of the side effects also of the mRNA vaccines is miscarriage, right? You guys are all reportedly Republicans. Part of the Republican platform is a pro-life stance, but you fail to do anything to protect the children and the unborn from the actions of the Health Department. I'm going to let somebody you might listen to say it better than myself. This is a quote from pediatric neurosurgeon Ben Carson. He says, "The fact of the matter is that the mortality rate for children from COVID-19 is 0.025, which is very similar to the rate for seasonal flu, and we haven't been for years and years going through all of these things for seasonal flu. Plus, we don't know what the long-term impact of these vaccines is. So this is really sort of a giant experiment. Do we want to put our children at risk when we know that the risk of the disease to them is relatively small, but we don't know what the future risks are? Why would we do a thing like that? It makes no sense whatsoever." And I would also like to quote someone else who is fairly well-respected. This is from Catholic Archbishop Vigano, excuse me for not pronouncing his name correctly. He said something that I think sums it up pretty well. Let me find it here. About the aborted fetal cells being used in the creation and the production of the vaccine. So, you know, if you, if you think that getting numbers up is more important than that, I'm not really sure how you guys can call yourselves pro-life Republicans, because granted, you don't have to follow the party platform. You know, that's okay. I just find it a bit disingenuous. Where is it? Oh, my goodness, I can't find it. Such a long article. You really should read his entire letter to the Catholic Church members here. I can't find it on my thing. But regardless, he does, he does say that it's morally reprehensible.
Thank you. We're going to the consent agenda, items 5 through 33. Supervisor Angus?
Nothing.
Roger Bishop?
None, thank you.
Supervisor Goode?
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Langenfelder?
None today, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to approve items 5 through 33.
So moved.
Second.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Further discussion, hearing that all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item 34. Oh, there's two. We'll go back. I guess it's going to be a presentation on a legal services center development. Maybe the time's set at 11:00. Right. We're doing legal services right now, and then 11 o'clock, we're going to do the one. All right. Mr. Lutowski.
Morning. Chairman Johnson, members of the board. I appreciate this opportunity to provide a snapshot and summary of progress on the Legal Services Center to be cited at the existing site of the former county jail on Pine Street, just behind the current Law and Justice Center. The mission is to develop a single building housing six legal departments that will be modeled largely after the Public Works Building and Development Services building shells of about 38,830 square feet. The county attorney and public defender will anchor the building on two separate floors, and the other legal departments served that will be co-located include legal, public defend, I'm sorry, legal defender, legal advocate, victim witness, and indigent defense. Next slide, please. The Legal Services Center offers a 36% increase in total square footage to the existing multiple county buildings that house the six legal departments. Yet, we estimate the energy costs will be only about a 7% increase overall, that due to our comparison of existing Public Works Building utilities, as well as those utilities for the existing legal department buildings that are being used, dropping about 40 cents per square foot. Now, we've had a real good track record, and I think this is evident by both the Public Works and Development Services building. Again, I'm speaking the same shell that would be used for Legal Services Center as being a track record of developing these buildings that are focused on providing business-focused work areas. And we're very confident that, and collaborating very closely already with the county attorney and the various legal department representatives, that this, in fact, will be achieved with this approach. I should also point out that the selection of a rather straightforward shell, a shell that can be very much molded interior-wise to the business functions necessary of legal services, will come at a significant design savings, because we are, in fact, using a building shell that has been designed and proven to function for county businesses. Next slide. This graphic shows the site of the proposed Legal Services Center on the site of the former county jail. It also shows in green three building properties which will be vacated. That includes DES, county attorney, and public defender. These properties would then be, become available for the board to utilize at their discretion. Two properties indicated in yellow just west of the proposed site are legal defender and victim witness. These buildings will be proposed for demolition to create additional space for off-street parking adjacent the Legal Services Center. And next slide. This will be my final slide, and just in summary, the board appropriated $9 million for this project in, over the course of three years as part of adopting the FY22 budget. And looking ahead, starting next year into 2023, we see both demolition of the Pine Street Jail and building design being concurrent and wrapping up towards the middle part of FY20, middle part of 2022, and with construction kicking off, looking at about a three-month procurement and about a 12-month construction period to be carried out, beginning in the fiscal year 23, extending along that 12, approximate 12-month construction period. With that, I'll close my presentation and be available for any questions.
You mentioned the demolition of two buildings for parking lots. Is that in this fee?
Yes, that, that would be a part of the overall project delivery.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Lutowski. Is it okay with the clerk if I go to 34? Thank you. I'll open the public hearing, discussion, possible action, approval, the adoption of Board of Supervisors Resolution 2021-190A. I have someone signed up. Brian Ware. Brian Ware.
Supervisors, county manager, department heads, and staff. Agenda item 34 is yet proof that Mojave County has a lot to offer in the recreational market. With Mojave County ordinances already allowing special events for 99 people or less with no permit under county ordinances 37Z, plus additional private property recreational opportunities in ordinances 37K, O, and P, along with the ability to request a one-time special event permit for larger events over 100, a special use permit for long-term events, or a zoning change for a permanent status or permanent business capabilities, I think it's obvious Mojave County has plenty to offer each level of entrepreneurial opportunity in the camping, off-road, hunting, and fishing recreational market, whether public or private. With today's RVs being so off-grid capable, complete with solar panels, large-capacity batteries, larger holding tanks, and whisper-quiet generators, there's almost no need for a complete utility-based RV park in an off-grid situation. There is no need to spend significant amounts of money to meet utility infrastructure requirements when the surrounding area is decades away from the ability to offer utility connections. RV parks should be left to town proper where utility infrastructure is available, and the county has met the standard of utility infrastructure by making service connections available beyond the properties. So when it comes to places such as this being so far off-grid, they should be labeled campgrounds. Campgrounds are inherently quieter at all hours, because they are not based on any permanent residency, as the definition of RV park states in the county's definition. In fact, more people use tents and keep overnight needs simple when camping. The typical camper wants to see the stars and enjoy a campfire and visit with friends in what's typical of an off-grid dark-sky setting, as compared to lit-up RV parks with full-featured amenities that are more intrusive on the surrounding community, primarily due to the live-on-site capability allowed in an RV park, which tends to collect more vehicles and personal belongings. Campgrounds make more sense. They are based on shorter stays and no long-term living. So for that reason, I do believe the county should approve this zoning change and allow this venture to grow our recreational market, providing another family-fun adventure in Mojave County.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the board on this item? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. Mr. President of the Board.
Mr. Chairman.
Your pleasure.
This is in my district of Golden Valley, and I'd like to hear from Mr. Walsh or Chris Ballard what the difference is between this request and Mr. Ware's request in Mesquite Ranch. There seem to be some similarities there, so I think the public would like to know what that difference is, and if you could point that out, I certainly would appreciate it.
Chairman Johnson. Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Bishop, good morning, board. This, the application that you have before you is an application to convert a property from AR to CRE 36 acre minimum. The applicants on this particular project are looking to, based on what they informed us, is to implement a glamping site. Basically, it's a new kind of camping, combined glamorous camping, I think, is where it comes from. And basically, the intent, what we've seen in other similar-type scenarios, what we've seen, not necessarily in the county, but in other locations, is they'll have permanent tents placed onsite, have everything ready for the campers that come out. Sometimes their yurts, sometimes their tents, sometimes, all sorts of different applicabilities, or all sorts of different options for them. But basically, the campers come out, have that experience, and go, everything set up for them. They don't have to haul everything with them to come to the site. To answer the question of the differences between this and the proposal that was before the board at the last meeting for a special event permit, this would be a permanent business camping campground location, whereas what was presented last time was a special event permit to have RVs and various folks, I think it was over 250 participants come for a three-night event, or two-to-three-night event in the Dutch Flats area. That's, at least to the best of my knowledge, I believe that answers the question, but I'd be happy to answer any more.
Okay, that answers my concerns. There were letters of opposition. Do you know whether or not those issues have been resolved with the neighboring properties?
The applicant for this specific item attended the Planning and Zoning Commission, and she had indicated that she had reviewed those letters and had reached out to the constituents that had voiced concerns or had sent in letters of opposition. What she presented to the commission was that the letters of opposition had concerns about a potential goat dairy or goat farm also being included with the glamping opportunity. At the commission, she indicated that they were withdrawing that intention to raise goats on this property. So she believed, at least what she presented to the commission was at that time that those concerns had been addressed.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tim, is there any way to enforce that they won't be running a goat dairy after the board re-zones this?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Gould, one option that the board could have is to restrict that use as part of the rezone. Basically, you could approve the rezone for this property to the CRE 36 acre minimum and restrict the ability to raise goats on this property. Other than that, no, that size acreage and that zoning would allow for it later on. The applicant just indicated that they were no longer pursuing it.
And they could also do anything else that that zoning allows?
Correct.
So when people come in and say, "I'm not going to do something," or "I'm going to do something," we merely have to take them at their word and that they don't change their mind at a later date?
With the option of restricting that at the time of the rezone, that's correct.
And this is a residential property surrounded by other residential properties?
It's an agricultural residential property, 40-acre, surrounded by other AR properties.
Thank you.
Chairman Johnson. Supervisor Lingefelder?
Tim, does this proposed development, is it within any area plans? And if so, does it comply with that area plan?
I'm going to yield to my planning and zoning staff to help me on the specifics of that.
Mr. Chair, Supervisor Lingefelder, it is not in an area plan. The only plan that it is, that it's in, is the general plan, which is currently designated as rural development area and does not require a plan amendment.
Thank you, Scott.
Mr. Walsh, if the board desires, can they put on a one-year, two-year, three-year review of this property, if they so desired? Into the motion.
No, so I think, Chairman Johnson, I believe what you're alluding to would be more of a special use permit. With the option of a special use permit, the board does have the ability to limit that. However, with a rezone, it would be vested in the property without the ability to go back and review.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Angus?
Last week, I went to one of these glamping experiences out in Williams near the Grand Canyon, and it was fabulous. So if this is anything like that, it's going to bring a whole sort of different demographic into Mojave County, and I think it would be a wonderful thing if it's done like this other one, if it's done correctly. So I'm all for this. Thank you.
See, no further discussion. Discussion is there, a motion?
I do have another question, Mr. Chairman. Is there a problem with raising goats on a 40-acre partial that has the correct zoning?
Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Bishop, our zoning currently allows for that. So per our zoning ordinance, there would be no issue with that. I believe it was just a concern of a neighbor that that was, that they had a concern with that proposal.
And the adjoining neighbors all have 40-acre parcels, I'm assuming?
I believe so. I'll have Scott verify that for me. Okay, so there are some smaller lots off to the west, but...
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Lingefelder?
One last question to follow up on that, Tim. Under the ordinance, how many animals would they be allowed if they choose to do that?
I'm sorry?
How many goats would they be allowed if they choose to do that?
If I may, I'll yield to Ms. Ballard.
Mr. Lingefelder, members of the board. The one, that's not an easy question to answer. They would have to keep the goats to a level that they did not become a concentrated animal feed operation. And so they would have to be able to allow them to either roam freely or have a large area open to them. They couldn't do a stockyard feeding. Have so many that they ended up doing stockyard feeding, because that would be an industrial operation, not an agricultural operation.
Well, I know that if you have a certain number of dogs, you're considered a kennel, so I just didn't know if there's anything under the current rules where if they have a certain number of other livestock or animals, or whatever they're doing out there that...
There is no hard-fast number like there are with caddies or kennels.
Thank you.
Supervisor Gould?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My point was not so much an anti- goat point. My point was that when we rezone something, that that person requesting the rezone can tell us anything they want to tell us, but they can still do whatever's permitted by the zoning that they get. Thank you.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop?
The commission recommended approval by unanimous vote, and after hearing this testimony, I agree. I think this board should also approve, and I'll put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second for the discussion. Do you want to redo your motion again?
Make a motion that we approve the action on Resolution Number 2021-190, a rezone.
Second, all right.
Chairman Johnson, just, if I may, just a couple of point of clarifications. I've placed a map here showing the properties, and then, just as a point of clarification, the property currently now could house, as it's zoned currently right now, could also house goats as well, so, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign?
No.
We have a motion carries. Go to the regular agenda. Item number 35, accept the equipment grant from the Constable's Ethic Standards and Training
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop?
I will make a motion to approve this with the recommendation that the Mojave County Constables unify their activity logs so that we can easily read what the Constables are doing, should we desire to do that. Right now, I think they all have different types of logs, and it takes a matter of time to figure out what each log is saying, because they're so different. So I would like to make a motion that we approve this grant application, and unrelated, ask the Constables to unify their logs.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. We have a motion and a second for the discussion. The one question I have is, do you know if the, these are practice rounds that come in, do they have to be expended at an authorized range where you can, you know, in the older days, when I was there, you had to go to an authorized range and turn in your cards to show that you qualified? Do we know that, or is it just...
The Constables have a range master that is certified by Arizona Post, and he just certifies the certification, the scores, and sends those into the appropriate place. But he is present today in the audience.
But that's just for the yearly qualification? You don't have to qualify yearly? I mean, like, the ammunition we're approving today can be used anywhere?
Yes, from what I'm able to glean from my communications, is the Constables will practice when they're out hunting or when they're out in the wilderness. They don't have any kind of means or regulations as to how that practice is done, or regulated or documented.
So it's not a statewide requirement?
No, it's not.
Okay, that's my only thing. We all go hunting, and we all go shooting around, that's not really practicing. But we have a motion and a second for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number 36, discussion, possible action, approve raising the county's starting wage by $2. County Manager Elters?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and board members. I have a couple of slides to go over with you. If we can IT, have IT put them up, please, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman and board members, I have been reporting to you now on several consecutive months of excessive employment vacancies. There are more than 100, which is greater than 10%, given our employment numbers. Those vacancies affect every department and every position. To give you an example, it affects, it has been affecting the assessors, development services, public health, public works, sheriff's office, and jail, probation, and the courts, to name some. The positions that are vacant include all functional classifications, its leadership positions at the director level, managerial, professional, administrative, and clerical, technical, and even certified positions, among others. There is a cost to turnover, and these positions add up. We calculated the cost according to HR industry standards, and for the last five years since 2017, our vacancies and related turnover have cost, on an average, of over $3 million, three-quarter of a million dollars a year. So when you add up those four years from 2017 to 2021, the cost is over $4 million. We are competing with every sector in the economic market, and I think you all have seen that at some level, both the private and the public. And given that our starting pay is at minimum wage, which is currently $1,215, we are losing potential employees to the service industry, among others. We have tried to take some steps. We have done what we can, including posting online and in professional publications. We have held a job fair that I reported to you on. In that particular one, we had 132 people come through, over 100 applications completed, and as of the end of October, we've hired six people. We will have another job fair coming up next week to continue to address this concern. Next slide, please. No, go back, thank you. So not only were challenged with new hires, but we are, we really are not retaining, and we are losing valuable employees. They are hard to replace. Those employees are not easy to replace. And given our regular, normal workload of county services, and I would include in those all services, recording documents, assessing property, collecting revenues, issuing permits, and the list goes on, along with implementing the fiscal year 22 budget plan that the board approved for staff, our employees are really stretched thin. The FY22 budget plan includes a robust capital improvement program that we are grateful for and excited to work on, and that includes facilities and infrastructure. And just to name those two... And just to name those to you, we have the animal shelter, the court remodel, the legal services center that you just saw presentation on, sheriff's substation, the morgue and medical examiner, which we have yet to kick off, and then when you add to that the jail reentry facility, and the ARPA projects that we've programmed for about half of the $41 million, and we have yet to program the rest of it when the funding arrives, that, if you add up those projects, that adds up to about $75 million. I can honestly tell you, these projects can only be successful if the county has qualified people, employees, to carry them forward. You know, outsourcing is an option, but even if we were to outsource to third-party contractors and professional firms, that would require internal expertise to provide professional oversight, guidance, ensure accountability of contractors, and provide administrative support. Next slide, please. So, I come to you today with a sense that we really, as a county, we need to act. We need an employee compensation package that enables us to attract, to hire, and to retain, and that would consist of $1 per hour increase to every county employee. And the reason we include every county employee is to avoid compression. That $1 per hour increase would be in fiscal year '22, except elected officials. An additional $1 per hour increase would be in FY '23. The cost of this proposal would be $2 million to the general fund in FY '22, and an additional $2 million in FY '23, so by FY '23, the total will be $4 million. We can pay for this proposal from local, federal assistance program. Mojave County is scheduled to receive $5 million in federal fiscal year '22, and another $5 million in federal fiscal year '23. That would be a total of $10 million in additional federal funds that have been approved. And if the board chooses to use those funds to fund this proposal, it would cover it for three years, at which time we believe increases, and the cost of business will be a part of it, and we will have three years to plan for it. Using these funds would reduce direct impact to, on our local taxpayers and our local tax rates, and can cover, like I said, up to three years where it would have, during the first three years, if the board approves these funds, it would have no impact on local taxpayers. Next slide, please. This is the last slide I have, Mr. Chairman and Board members. So, other considerations to keep in mind, inflation, cost of living is going up, we're all paying more for everything we buy, and as a result, the Arizona minimum wage was tied into CPI, so Arizona minimum wage is going to increase from $1,215 an hour to $1,280 an hour in January of next year. This is a 65 cents, which is more than 5%, and like I said, it is tied into CPI, and this is a must. We, as county governing body, do not have a choice but to go along. We know for a fact that elected officials, while elected officials are excluded from this, elected officials will receive raises in January of 2025, and some will be as early as January of 2023. So in summary, the proposal is raise Mojave County minimum starting wage to $1,450 an hour from about $1,250 an hour, reduce the ranges for every position from 10, that it is today when they're not used, to seven or eight steps, and reinstate the annual performance evaluation tied to step increases, so we do not stagnate and find ourselves in similar position in a year or two from now. I appeal to you on behalf of our staff and those departments that I mentioned, and those that I did not, and I can assure you, it's my feeling that doing nothing is not an option at this time, and it will not serve our county residents well either. So thank you for listening to me, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have for me on this proposal.
Thank you. Can you explain to everyone exactly what is the federal local assistance fund, and where does it come from?
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus Bradley. The local assistance and tribal consistency fund is part of the ARPA funding that went through Congress already. It consisted of $2 billion, $1 billion was local assistance, and the, forgive me, it was $2 billion split in two federal fiscal year, that's FY '22 and FY '23, $1 billion per year. There is a formula that was developed by the Senate Committee that was working on this, it was endorsed, it was developed in conjunction with NACO, and the formula relates to states and counties with a lot of public lands. So it's really related to PILT, and so those dollars come to Mojave County based on that formula, they come with no strings attached, so if the board wishes to use it to fund this proposal, it can be done.
Okay, so it's more money that fell from the skies, right?
Yes, thank you for...
You know, I'm not sure that this will get where you want to go, there's so many reasons why everybody, it's not just Mojave County, everybody's having problems getting employees. But here in Mojave County, so with this, if this is approved, including what we gave in the last budget, how much, what is the actual percentage, raise percentage are our employees getting?
Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Angus, with this raise, $1 an hour, if you break our county employment into two categories, the lower entry level would equate to about 8%. The upper range of earners would be more like 2%. And so if you take the number of employees in each of those and average it out, the average is about 4.5%, Supervisor.
Okay, that is including what we gave them during last budget?
No, this is just...
So we gave how much last budget?
Well, in FY '21, there were 2.5%.
Right.
In FY '22, we only did, if you recall, the merit pay increase, and that was limited at 3%, and not every employee got it, that was to pay performers, actually. And I might, if I may, Supervisor Angus, other counties are having similar discussion, and the reason I know is my counterpart from Yavapah County sent out a survey to all counties, and it covered from 2017 to the present. Other counties were struggling with similar challenge as we have from 2017 on, but every county has done something, I have the numbers to share with you, and many counties, at least, at least, three or four, two of them are comparable to our counties, are having discussion now to see what can be done in mid-year because of the same challenge that we're having.
Okay, and when people leave the county, do we do exit interviews on why they're leaving? Do we keep track of that?
I would like, is Ken on the, Ken is, okay, your timing is perfect, Ken.
Like Superman.
Good morning, Board. We do do exit interviews, we give them multiple options, we send survey monkeys to everybody, we give them the option to come see us prior or after their termination date, or we also give them a chance to give us a form letter if they want, they can just give us an example of the letters, and then we look into it.
And then what do you do with that information?
We compile it, we keep it, we review it to see if there is any red flags in the county, you know, some departments, they may say something about a department, a person, so we look into that to see if there was any problems of the reason why they left. We look at reasons of why they are leaving, you know, their family is moving, better job, wages, we have some on PTO, so we have a wide variety. We don't, most of them are the PTO and the wages, but I honestly can't tell you that everybody fills out a survey. We probably have 15% of the employees filling out the surveys. So it's just a small portion that I can give you...
We all know it's not just pay, why people leave.
That is correct.
So every job I was in, in the private sector, there were exit interviews, and, you know, you assume that if you say something after you leave that you couldn't say when you were there, that management would hopefully follow through and make sure the people know about it, maybe changes can be made. I just want to make sure that happens here.
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Johnson. Manager Elters, HR, don't go anywhere yet, I might have some questions. Thank you. You know, I agree that something has to be done, and I agree with your proposal to reduce the ranges and also to reinstate the performance evaluations tied to step increases. My questions are, do we currently have a total compensation model in Mojave County? Because when I look at, or I listen to, you know, we're competing with other places, when I look at Mojave County's compensation, you know, right now, we're talking about salary and hourly rate. We also have health benefits coverage for individuals and families, we have paid leave program, disability insurance, life insurance, employee assistance programs, ASRS retirement benefit, which I believe is one of the best out there, educational assistance programs in some departments, but I think all the employees get are pay stubs every other week with salary or their base pay, and it doesn't really reflect what they really earn if they were to get total compensation statements instead of just a pay stub. I think, I'm not sure if I agree with just the across-the-board increase, rather than that, it might make more sense to have a goal of being perhaps in the 50th percentile or a little above in each one of our job categories. And I don't know if we track where Mojave County ranks between all of our competitors in those job categories, but it's certainly something that would be a little more targeted. Obviously, to get to the 50th percentile or a little above in every one of our job categories, it might look a little different between those job categories to stay competitive. We'll never be 100% at the top of the range in Mojave County with salary and base wage, but it's a little bit more of a targeted way to do it, and I really feel like we need to move towards total compensation statements to show, you know, how good of a deal they're really getting. You're not going to go to a fast food restaurant, and you might make a comparable hourly rate, but you're not going to get all those other things.
Yes, we do do compensation surveys throughout the year, plus every October, the Association of Counties, towns, and cities sends out to all the counties and towns, and we turn in our baseline positions, and then we tell them how many is in it, what's our average rate, what's our pay ranges, and then we do have a comparison. So we get it about the first of the year that we get the survey of what all the other counties are currently paying at the October 1st date. We are, I mean, some of our positions are pretty comparable, other positions are not comparable, but then it doesn't do a lot of our line staff, it does key positions, engineers, the directors, the public fiduciary, and some clerks and generalities. It doesn't do each and every position. Mojave County has about 250 different positions within it, so we don't get comp studies on each and every position.
I understand it. How many job categories would you say that Mojave County has?
About 250.
250 job categories?
Categories, and then the positions...
That includes all administrative positions individually counted? I mean, there's administrative, there's clerical, there's...
There's technical, there's professional, I mean, we can pull up the engineers, the attorneys, so we can pull up certain classifications.
Clearly, I mean, everybody that works for Mojave County, they all matter, we should somehow track to make sure that we're competitive, or, I mean, that's kind of what we're talking about, rather than just an across-the-board increase, you know, where, as you just said, there might be some job categories that maybe that's not the problem, or it is the problem in some others, you know, I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Langerfelter, Supervisor Langerfelter, forgive me. We do track those, and I think the board has seen for a number of years now, the various categories where the board has declared one function classification as a hot job, that was done for attorneys before, that was done for engineers at one time. We've used that where one given area had experienced hiring problems, this time, we're just experiencing across the board. Your suggestion related to, if I understand it correctly, I think related to the value of the compensation package. We did that at other employment agency where, both actually in the public and the private, where once a year, we provided the employee with a one-pager that identified the value of their compensation at, and it did include hourly pay, benefits, holidays, health insurance, either any matching to a 401K or the Arizona State Retirement System. I think that's really a great idea, we can, certainly, that's something we can work on going forward, pick a time, do it once a year, and just help the employees understand the value of the compensation package they're getting, because it's not just their hourly rates. Having said that, I think our, the county benefit package and public sector in general used to be recognized for being of a higher value and better structure. I really am not sure that that is the case anymore, because the public sector is offering health insurance and holidays, and they're even offering some things that we cannot offer in government and in the public sector. So, you know, we do track those to the extent that we can, but it's a moving target, it's constantly changing and makes it hard to measure against.
So we, do we, does the county right now, do they provide total compensation statements to all of our employees?
Supervisor, not to my knowledge, but I just say, I think it would be a great idea... a great idea to pursue going forward. I, I think it, I think it would help employees understand the value of what they're getting.
Thank you.
That's interesting because I've brought that up for years and years, saying that should be set out with our, our taxes, and we never do. Supervisor Ghul?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ken, you spoke of wage surveys. Were those coming in from other counties and municipal governments and the state government, or does that include any private sector?
Um, the, most of them, well, all of the ones that we do process, process from different counties and cities, um, they're, they need to share with us because all their wage salaries are, um, public records. Asking a private company to give us their wage salaries, we have not had very much luck because they're not obligated to give us any of those scales. We normally find out from family members who have applied for the job, who are working in that, or, um, that's how we find out information about the private sector.
I think the Arizona Commerce Authority does some tracking of private sector wages and a lot, I wouldn't think that, there might be some competition between the county and municipal governments, but I think a lot of those people that left went to work in the private sector also. So when we only compare ourself, our, our competitors for employees are not just other, other governments, or also the private sector?
Yes, sir, but, um, like says, they are the private sector, they're not obligated to, like says, w- we try to get the wages how we can, like says, through information, you know, sometimes it's networking with people at the association level that we, we can try to get those wages, or they're advertising, um, a lot of private companies are starting to send out flyers with hiring wages, um, either with, there was a pipe company, um, here that was sending out flyers for starting wage $21 an hour and that kind of stuff. So we, we collect that information, but no, we do not on a regular routine basis collect private sector information.
What would you say is the cost of a county, uh, employee benefit package other than their retirement? Because the, I would think it would be the same for all employees. The retirement is based on the, your salary or wages, but what, the healthcare, uh...
Our, our benefit package is about 38 to 40%. Is that...
Stanchion.
About 10,000, what percentage is that? But, my apologies, sir.
When I left the State Senate to COBRA for the medical insurance, it was over $1,800 a month. And that was in, uh, 2013.
Our, our COBRA rates, if I'm remembering correctly, for an individual, depending on whether the high deductible or standard, right around 560 per person. Um, if you have a family, you're running over $1,000 and that's just for medical, that doesn't include dental, vision, any of the other stuff.
And, I don't believe that a lot of employers in Mojave County are offering a benefit package that's equal to our benefit package.
We do have a pretty good benefit package.
So I think that when we just look at what's posted at In-N-Out Burger on their, I think we're not really comparing apples to apples.
This is, we're, we're trying to get in, in my opinion, sir, that when the younger employees who are trying to come in, they don't look at the benefits, whatever, they look at what their hourly rate is. Um, because a lot of people are working paycheck to paycheck and they want to know how much money they're bringing home. And so we've even have to express to people, when you're hired in with the county, you are required to pay into Arizona Retirement, you are required to be part of that. So we tell them, we're taking 12.22% of your paycheck away, but the county is also matching it, so there is a benefit. But someone at the lower end of our pay scales, they're just trying to make ends meet, so a lot of those employees do not look at that, sir.
That's, that is probably legitimate. Do you have any idea what percentage of county employees live in the Kingman area rather than Lake Havasu and Bullhead City?
Um, I can find that out for you, but I don't have it on the top of my head. Most of our positions are here in Kingman and we have a good portion of our employees live here, but, um, I would have to run a survey of people's addresses and give you a, a total, but I can do that for you.
And my point there is that where you're really only drawn from the Kingman area for employees rather than the other areas, because most people are not going to drive, make a two-hour commute if they're going to be working in the Kingman area. So you're, you're competitive, you're being competitive for employees in, in Kingman essentially, more so than the entire county.
Well, we have...
So it's a smaller pool.
It is a smaller pool, but we do have employees from Bullhead. I have one in my department that comes up every day. Um, I know there's Havasu employees that come up here every day, um, but it is a, a smaller portion. Um, those employees who live in those cities, when an opening comes in, if they're here, they like to transfer down to where their home is. And so that happens, I know, some of the larger, um, departments that have multiple sites, that is available if there is an opening.
Sure. Thank you.
Chairman Johnson, I have just one more question. Um, are, are new employees, are they surprised, shocked by how much money comes out of their paycheck for that retirement? Um, you know, when you're starting out, you know, it, it's not a choice, you have to do it for the pyramid scheme, that is our pension, our pension system, um, but it is a large amount that comes out.
Yeah, 12, 12.22%.
Right. I mean, as I understand it, it's more than all the other benefits put together. So I think when people take a job and they, they're figuring out their stuff, they don't realize how much is coming out for that and for some, it's, it's like such a future, uh, benefit that they don't sort of, I'd, I'd be a little...
Right, that they don't look, I mean, we, we do have people who have complained and we tell them, we have no choice.
Right.
During the interview process, many of the departments are making sure that they understand that upfront. When a job offer goes out, we try to explain that before they start. When, um, the Human Resources Department sends out new hire packets, we emphasize that piece, um, because we send them the SRS or the PSPRS information, um, that they have to bring back to us to elect coverage or, um, with their benefit plans on that first day of employment. And then, um, a lot of them don't understand, so they'll call us, or in new employee orientation that first day, it's mentioned again in the benefit plan and some of them are shocked.
Yeah, it is shocking.
Yes. Because when you're expecting to bring home, let's say, $13 an hour and then your average is only like $12 an hour because of your retirement, but if you stay with the county for 20 years, it really is a benefit.
If you gave them the choice, most of them, like a, a regular, you know, uh, retirement system, it's your choice whether you do it or not, but they have no choice in this. So I just want everybody to know that.
Yes, ma'am, we do not have a choice.
What are your total number of authorized positions in the county?
Authorized positions in the county? I don't have that number at the moment. Authorized positions? About 1,400 positions.
Um, Mr. Chairman, as of, as of today, the number of positions with people in them is then, is 1,011, uh, countywide, various departments, and when you add the courts and temporary positions to that, you add, and you have an additional 236 positions.
236 additional?
Yes, sir.
But how many, we don't know how many authorized positions we have, we only have 1,400? We have 1,400 and we're...
We, we have, we have positions that are frozen, uh, Mr. Chairman, that we do not fill and that is part of our annual budgets that the Board approves every year where a department freezes positions and they don't fill them out.
Right, that's, that's part of, it should be part of this when we're discussing, that we're freezing those positions because we haven't been able to fund them.
Indeed. And, you know, I, I, I understand the discussion that we're having, uh, it, it's, it's important and, and relevant. Um, I, I will tell you though, uh, the, there are so many different reasons, uh, that compile into producing these vacancies, but the reality is, we do have vacancies and departments are struggling to meet the needs, um, uh, of the services and to deliver projects and many of them are, are in the audience today, uh, they have communicated their concerns. We have departments, the one that comes to mind is probation, where they have changed their shifts to utilize the resources available to cover the needs. And, and again, I, I, you know, we can go on and on, but I, I wanted to convey to you and give them a chance to perhaps step up and convey to you what they're dealing with on a day-to-day basis.
Chairman Johnson?
Supervisor Linkenfelder.
Thank you. Uh, on the retirement, um, it is, if you're one of the lower earners, probably a little inconvenient to see so much go out of your check, but I want to ask, um, is there still an individual mandate out there in the private sector for health insurance? Are you required as an individual to, to, to provide yourself or to carry private health insurance and if you don't have it by the end of the year, do you get a tax penalty?
Um, I, I know the penalties have been removed, um, I know they're still having the marketplaces, um, and I don't think the penalty for having a premium plan is in place, or the Cadillac Plan, there used to be, if you had too good of benefits, they'd tax you because you had too good of benefits. Um, but we, we still do pay into, um, every year based on how many employees we have into the medical, the nationwide medical funding for the marketplace.
Right.
Um, but I don't, at this point in time, I can't.
And I think, um, if you were in the private sector, it might be, I mean, your concern for what comes out for your retirement, which actually you're paying yourself, might be offset a little bit if you're in the private sector and it becomes more important when you start having a family, when you have to go out and you have to go into one of the exchanges and you have to purchase private health insurance, um, you might see a little bit more come out of your check.
Yes, sir.
Every month.
Well, and our plans, um, based on a family plan...
Very reasonable.
The reasonable, you may have to pay, um, depending on which plan you have. I have a family, I pay 100 and some, uh, a month for my medical or a pay period. Um, and so not everybody pays that much, others are single, and so if you're just doing, covering yourself, our plan is extremely reasonable, but once you start adding the families and stuff, it goes up. And then if you're doing COBRA, then it gets really expensive because you're paying 102% of the plan.
Sure. It, it sounds to me that in the future, maybe that Mojave County should maybe look at not only the other public sector agencies out there that are, that are perhaps competitors, but also maybe some of the private industry as well, um, maybe a health insurance survey or benefit survey. Also, you mentioned you weren't really sure how to get wage, wage information, but I know that, and I would defer to the Economic Development Director who is in the audience, but I know that the North American, uh, Industry Classification System, the NEX Codes, uh, they provide average wages for each sort of job category out there. Um, so you might want to look there to start.
Okay.
And maybe a call to the Arizona Commerce Authority for any other resources out there.
Yes, sir.
You know, again, I'm not, I don't think too much of a fan of the, of the across-the-board, um, approach, but if you were to look at each one of the job categories and find out, you know, how do we make each one of those categories more competitive, perhaps a goal, um, 50% percentile or a little higher, what do we need to get there? It's just, it seems to me just to be a little more precise in the approach.
I know we have some elected officials here who want to address the Board, but we have an 11 o'clock time set and, uh, we give the Board a five-minute break. So we'll take a five-minute break and then come back for the presentation. Sorry to keep you waiting.
As you know, we'll be visiting with you in two weeks in person. We're very much looking forward to that. Next slide, please. Here is my contact information, my direct line and my email. I'm very happy to answer any questions by phone, by email and today. So, thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you and please let me know if I can answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Adelson, can we get a copy of that slideshow?
Absolutely. Alan Temper has a copy of the PowerPoint and it'd be my pleasure to share it with all of you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
All right, nothing further. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go back. Item number 36, anybody wishing to address the board?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, County Manager Elders, thank you for letting us speak. My name is Stephen Moss. I'm currently the Presiding Judge of Mojave County, Arizona. With me is Kip Anderson, who is the Court Administrator. I want to first state my appreciation for the conversation this Board has been having. Many of the Board members have brought up points which I think are, in our experience, very legitimate. The younger people don't necessarily care about the health insurance and the retirement. They're short-term thinkers that perhaps changes as they get older. But when you're bringing in a 21-year-old probation officer or a sheriff's deputy or detention officer, you're dealing with the short-term thinkers. And that's where the job market is at for entry-level positions. When it comes to many of the commentary, the questions that was raised, we do do exit interviews at the Superior Court level. I believe our return rate is actually 60% to 70%. The primary driver of them leaving is income, it's wages. Second would be the stress or overworked nature of the jobs. And third would be family issues. They're leaving because they're having children, they're moving, whatever it might be. The individual study that you referenced, Supervisor Lingan Filter, the courts actually did it. We did that a couple of months ago to get data. Of our positions, very, very few are at market rate. We have most of them, most of our positions is well below. We have some positions which are 30% plus under-market. And that includes private sector. We pulled mostly, primarily, public sector. But we did reach out to some of the organizations that you referenced, Supervisor Lingan Filter. We got what information we could to include that in there. Our manpower issues, our labor issues are fairly critical in the court system. Two months ago, I was considering shutting down the juvenile detention center because we could not keep it open with our existing juvenile detention officer load. They're leaving. We can't compete with our own sheriff's department, let alone other jobs around the county. And that's when we did two things because keeping it, closing it, would just cause even more expense to the county because we would have to send our juvenile offenders out of county. And so, we'd be paying them essentially the same rate and paying transport costs. So, what we did to alleviate that situation is definitely a Band-Aid fix. It cannot last forever. We changed the working hours. We did three 12s and four 12s, so it comes out to 40 hours per week to hopefully keep our detention officers happier with a bit of a longer weekend, even though they work more during the day. But we also, that wasn't enough. We also had to pull probation officers and surveillance officers off the street, which I'm certain the county attorney's office doesn't particularly like very much because they're supposed to be monitoring bad guys. But we have minimal manpower shortages to protect the juveniles which are in our custody, and we can't meet them. So, when it comes down to it, we need the dollar-per-hour increase, hopefully as immediately as possible, followed by the second dollar-per-hour increase in fiscal year '23. That, I do not believe, will solve the entirety of our problem, but it would give us the ability to update our study. And we can present that to you, Supervisor Lingan Filter, if you'd like, so we can identify which specific employees and job categories are still under-market. And I would say that anything is a good start. When I was talking, hearing the conversation about service industries and how they don't offer everything we can as a county, a few months ago, several months ago, I take pictures of job postings when I see them out about the communities. And I sometimes send them to Sam, and I used to send them to Presiding Judge Gertler when he was in the county. Subway, about half a year ago, was offering $14.50 an hour. They offered retirement. They offered college opportunities. They offered paid time off. They offered just about everything that a private business could offer, and they have a lot more flexibility when it comes to working hours, free food, et cetera, which is also, by the way, advertised by them. And I can't imagine what they're at now, but I suspect it's higher. And so, if you have any questions about how the court system is operating, we do have critical manpower shortages. We need to get our probation officers back on the street. We need to get our surveillance officers back on the street. We need to keep our detention center open. We need to fill those vacant clerk positions. It's kind of sad when our clerks who have to deal with, and I will never call them bad people when it comes to front windows, because many, most of them, the vast majority are not, but they're highly stressed people. When our clerks are starting at $14.52 an hour and they're dealing with highly stressed people, sometimes it's really hard for them to say, why am I doing this? So, we need any help we can get, and I believe this is a very strong first step. Thank you. Is there any questions before I go sit down?
None.
Thank you very much for hearing from us.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to address the Board?
May I be allowed to address the Board?
Shortly.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Supervisor Johnson, Chairman Johnson, our Board, distinguished Board, Adam Clark, Deputy County Attorney Tyler Palmer, County Manager Mr. Elders. I will be very brief. I understand some of the concerns that have been raised by the Board and their question today. I've been here for the entire meeting, and I understand the comparison to the public sector and the private sector that has been made. And those are some valid points, and I understand that viewpoint. But being somebody who will not personally benefit from this raise in any way, I am just here speaking on behalf of the county employees and the people that work for me. And I will tell you that we have had a hard time retaining people, and we are even having a hard time getting applications right now. I've had a couple of openings for almost a year, and we finally were able to fill one, and we're sitting on zero applications right now. And our biggest concern is retaining the employees that we have. And so, that is why I'm asking the Board to strongly consider doing this, particularly since it is overall for the citizens of Mojave County tax-neutral. Now, I understand there's always a broader spectrum. Anytime you're talking about money falling from the sky, eventually, it still falls down on the taxpayer. I mean, we're all paying taxes. We're all paying federal taxes, state income tax. So, ultimately, it does come down to the taxpayer. But with the money that is coming in that our County Manager has so astutely put before you, this is something that is not going to result in any tax burden over the next few years to Mojave County. You're not talking about raising the property taxes, which has been controversial. We're not talking about sunset or quarter-cent sales tax being renewed. We're talking about something that the money is there for it right now. So, I would ask you to consider the fact that, as I've mentioned before, this Board, you are actually the largest employer. You are the CEOs of the largest employer in Mojave County with over 1,400 employees. And these employees aren't just all in Kingman. We always have employees that live in Lake Havasu City and Bullhead City. We have attorneys that live in Bullhead City. We have attorneys that lived in Bullhead City until recently and just moved to Kingman. We have multiple attorneys that live in Lake Havasu City. We have employees that live all over the county. So, this is something that does benefit all three major cities as well as the outlying areas. So, I appreciate your time, and I know this is a difficult decision for you. Thank you.
I had a question for you. Are you able to cherry pick from other counties because of the wages we pay here?
We have not been able, yes, we have not been able to cherry pick attorneys. But I will tell you that, you know, there are some counties, like La Paz County, for example, that does not pay what we pay. And we were able to steal an employee from them that has turned out successfully. That was about five years ago, and that was about the last time we were able to pull somebody else. We have lost a lot of employees over the years, and you can argue about wages versus where people would want to live. But we have lost specifically to Yavapai, at least four attorneys to Yavapai, and four at one time to Coconino over the years. And we haven't been able to steal any of them back. And I try, believe me. When I get an opportunity, we try. When they handle a conflict case, we trade conflicts off with Coconino and Yavapai because they're similarly situated counties with about the same population. And it's probably not something I should admit publicly, but we had an excellent attorney come up and handle a sexual assault case. And I may have tried to poach him a couple of years ago. So, it is something that we do try to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for me? Thank you.
Any other discussion by the Board? Yes.
I make a motion that we approve item 36. Second.
Motion second for discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No. What's the vote? I didn't hear it.
Four to one with Supervisor Lingan Filter voting no.
Item 37, oh, this is my item. We had the problem with the bond in Lake Havasu, and just to verify that we are going to waive that $25 fee. So, I'd make a motion to waive the $25 fee for the mistake.
Second.
Second.
Further, nothing. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number 39, Supervisor Angus.
Yeah, this is just to follow up on the item that we approved for my, the ARPA money that I was designated to use. So, with that, I make a motion to approve item 39. Second.
Motion second for the discussion. Hearing that, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are adjourned. All right, going back. We're not adjourned. Discussion possible. Asked updated County Health Director. I wonder where that was at, at the end.
Chairman Johnson, members of the Board. Get myself organized here. Just one moment, and then I'll get started. All right. What I'd like to cover today is just some general trend information. Case trends, COVID-19 transmission in Mojave County remains high with a case rate of 210 per 100,000 population and a percent positivity of 15%. Mojave County has the fourth-highest percent positivity across the state, according to the ADHS School Dashboard. Weekly case counts by week of diagnosis continue to decrease, a very good sign, throughout October, but still remain at an elevated level. We had 419 cases reported the week of October 23rd, which was a 3.7% decrease over the previous week. And the number of cases reported in October decreased by 30% compared to September cases. So, all in all, some good signs that we're seeing out in the community. Average age of cases for October was 44.1 years old. This is higher than the average in September, which was 39.6. So, another, just another sign there that we're seeing some changes within the population that's being impacted by the cases. Let's see here. I'll go on next to the school age cases and talk about some specific population here. Number of school-aged cases during the week of October 23rd decreased by 43.4% from the previous week. The number of cases for that week was equally divided between the five-to-13-year-olds and the 14-to-18-year-old age groups. And the overall number of cases among school-aged children in October decreased compared to our September numbers. Any questions so far in cases? All right, I'll keep going. We normally cover death trends next, so I'll cover that. The number of deaths by week of diagnosis in October decreased from our September numbers, but still, again, continues to be high. This number, of course, can change. As you know, you've probably seen that some of our numbers will change past those weeks as those deaths are actually attributed to COVID, and they learn more about that. So, sometimes, our numbers for previous weeks will change from that number. When looking at date of death, October had 41 reported deaths compared to 69 for the month of September. So, we are seeing that decrease. The average age of death in Mojave County throughout the pandemic is 72.9 years old. The average age has decreased to 70.6 for the year of 2021. So, we have seen a decrease there, although not terribly significant there. Since April 20 of 2021, the average age of death has been below 70 years old. However, the average age of death did increase from 67 to 68.3 in October. And over 80% of October deaths were among individuals older than 60. So, I'm not sure if you are aware that the Arizona Public Health Association released a study of deaths in Arizona. Basically, I'll just summarize what that report indicated. The average, the available data indicate that COVID-19 remains the leading cause of death in Arizona and the third-leading cause of death in the U.S. Since the data of the first reported, or since, yeah, sorry, since the data from the first reported COVID-19 death, there were 35.4 deaths per day on average, exceeding the average daily deaths from heart disease and cancer. So, this is throughout the state, so not just Mojave As you probably remember, back in the winter, we provided you with a report on excess deaths in Mojave County specifically. And our epidemiologist, Anna Scherzer, provided an updated report, which I'll also send out to you today to complement that easy PHA report on leading cause of death. Looking at the first nine months of 2020 and 2021 in Arizona, the number of deaths was higher than what occurred in previous years. So, we are seeing an increase in deaths that you cannot attribute to flu and just pneumonia and some other causes of death that we would typically see in the county. In Arizona, in 2020, there were greater than 10,000 more deaths in this period than in the previous two years. And this is per their count. In the same nine months of 2021, that gap increased to greater than 13 more deaths than in previous two years. There were 3,548 more deaths in the first nine months of the pandemic year 2021 than in the pandemic year 2020. So, there's definitely been a sign there that we need to be aware of and mindful of and tracking. In Mojave County, the pattern was similar. There were greater than 400 more deaths in the first nine months of the year in 2020 than there were in the same time period the previous two years. In 2021, the difference was more profound, with greater than 700 more deaths in the first nine months of the year than the same time period in pre-pandemic years, looking back at 2018 and 2019. So, following the emergence of COVID-19 in Arizona, the COVID deaths contributed to higher rates of pneumonia as well as deaths overall. And as you can, as you can imagine, oftentimes, people who are diagnosed with COVID-19 also find pneumonia kind of fast on its heels. So, that does become a contributing factor. Hospitalization trends, 74 hospitalizations of COVID-19 positive patients were reported in the month of October. This is a 57.2% decrease from the 173 hospitalizations in September, and that, I think, is following the pattern that you've probably seen in the hospital reports and some of the information that you might have seen in the local media and state media. The average age of COVID-19 hospitalizations in Mojave County is 65.7 years old. As with the average age of cases and deaths, the average age of hospitalizations also increased from September to October just very slightly. The largest percentage of October hospitalizations were from the 70 to 79-year age group, followed by the 60 to 69 age group. Questions so far? We'll move on to vaccination rates. 38.7% of Mojave County residents are vaccinated, according to the ADHS Dashboard. This, in this case, this is the third lowest in the state. The state vaccination percentage is 59% at this moment. We continue to have the lowest vaccination rate in the under-20 category with only 7.6% vaccinated. And our highest age group at 62.7 is with our 65-plus. But if you look at that on a state level, the state vaccination rate for the 65 and over category is 94.1. So, our older population are significantly lower in vaccination rates than the state. So, that's definitely a trend as we move into the holidays, as we move into people being in more close proximity to each other and being indoors that we need to be aware of. Excuse me just a second. I actually have a graphic I'd like to show. As you know, you know, there's a lot of vaccine information out in the community. I mean, there's a tremendous amount. And the various sources of going to CDC and going to ADHS for this information, it can be rather confusing for the public. So, our staff, our nursing manager developed this chart here that we'll actually place on our website. And our goal is to help people understand who's eligible and for what and for when. So, you've got those that are eligible for Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson &amp; Johnson and the ages. You've also got those that are eligible for the additional dose of vaccine, which is for those that are immunocompromised. And then, you've got your booster doses, and those individuals are, there are some specific categories for those individuals. And then, starting tomorrow, ASAP, we'll be reviewing the data from Pfizer related to the five-to-11-year-old vaccine, and we'll be making recommendations at that point. We should receive that recommendation either tomorrow, late in the day, or sometime on Wednesday. Ultimately, ASAP, the Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices will make the recommendation. That is forwarded to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention Director. That director makes the final decision on what that recommendation will look like, and then we'll forward it out to the public at that point.
Chairman Johnson, can I pipe in here? So, earlier today, a member of the public came up here and scolded us for the press release that went out recommending children get the vaccine. And personally, I agree. I think it's insanity, personally. So, everyone's got to realize that this is coming from other sources than the Board of Supervisors.
Certainly.
So, I did not see that press release, but I'd like to know if the Board would approve putting some kind of disclaimer on these press releases and even on the website, something like, "The following information has not been endorsed nor recommended by the Mojave County Board of Supervisors. Personally, I'd add, or anyone else with common sense, but we know that this is what's coming on. We know that you're part of the bigger Department of Health." But I'd like to ask the Board if that's something that they would consider.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are we currently in control of press releases that go out from departments?
I don't believe so.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, yes. I, we, our Communication Director, Roger Galloway, is the primary source for those press releases. Exception would be the Sheriff's Department, where at times, they do put out a press release pertaining to activities within the sheriff and specific to the Sheriff Department. But other than that, almost, I can't think of any other press release that would go from a county department outside of Roger and our Communication Department.
Was your question, the supervisors or the county? I thought it was the supervisors.
Supervisors.
Yeah. Yeah, the supervisors don't, we don't review the...
Thank you for clarifying that, Chairman. Usually supervisors, supervisors have the discretion and do their own. Occasionally, we'll be asked to and will gladly assist in one way or another, providing a list of distribution or so on. But we do not dictate to our Board members. Our Board members, when it comes to press releases, can release it from the district office at their discretion.
But theoretically, I believe the Board of Supervisors could say that this department or that department is prohibited from sending out press releases.
I don't know how to answer that, Mr. Chairman and Supervisor Gould. I'm not aware of at any time in the past where the Board said, "Thou shall not be any press releases." The intent of the press releases is to disseminate county business information that the Board acted on or that is worthy of sharing with the public. I'm not aware of any other situation or a, or an incident or an opportunity, I guess, a situation that would justify that. But if the Board wishes to say, "No press releases," I, staff works at the discretion and the direction of the Board.
That's, that is what I believe, that if we chose to not send out press releases, we could chose not to send out press releases. And I'm not saying that. I'm just clarifying that we have that authority.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Gould, yes. Forgive me, I don't mean to be nonchalant about it, but the Board approves the position, approves the budget, approves, you know, all things related to communication. So, if the Board was to vote to not send any press releases out from county departments outside of other, outside of departments that are headed by elected officials, we would not send any press releases.
So, it would seem to me if, that if we send out a press release saying that we recommend that children are vaccinated, that we're effectively endorsing the vaccination of children. I'm not interested in endorsing the vaccination of children. So, I don't want to send out a press release that says that. If you want to send out one that says that that vaccination is now available or approved by, well, let me, I don't even want to say approved by because I still don't believe that anything but Pfizer in foreign countries is approved to be used. I don't know that I want to go there. I don't think there's any reason to vaccinate children that young. I think it's ridiculous. But I think we are the ones that are in control. I think we should choose whether or not we're going to endorse that policy. Thank you.
I think maybe the Health Director could clarify. I don't think you put out that Mojave County was endorsing children getting it in that press release, from what I recall reading.
Chairman Johnson, I don't believe we did either. I do believe that when we state things, we typically state that the CDC recommends. So, it is not coming directly from us. This is a CDC recommendation. So, there may, you know, in the past, as it related to adults, there may have been quotes from me saying, "We recommend." But in terms of the children, I do believe parents need... I do believe parents need to be making those decisions for their children and look at all available research and information to make the best decision for their child. Period.
Supervisor Angus.
But it's going out on county letterhead. So the impression is that it's coming from us. So again, my recommendation is to, you could say, the CDC recommends, but I would like to have a disclaimer that says that this is not the thoughts or opinions, however the PIO would put it together.
Yes, yes.
Because we are getting into this weird territory here, and we've been, you know, I think that's sort of in the back of our minds. That's been irritating me for a long time, and we all know the CDC, everyone's getting the same information, right? We get it everywhere we go, but this is on our website. So ultimately, it speaks for us. Even though it says CDC, we're permitting it to be on there. So I just want to make some sort of disclosure that we don't recommend this, you know, or we're at least, you know, neutral on it. I just, now that we're getting into the whole children thing, which, again, I said earlier, I think is insane.
For what it's worth, we're dealing, of course, with probably the most controversial issue that we have with, you know, talking about COVID and what we put out. We try to be very careful in the way we say it. I think we could definitely, based on what you were saying and what might be the pleasure of the entire board, is to be clear about, this is a CDC recommendation, but it does not, either does not necessarily or does not follow the beliefs and opinions of the board, which has already voted, whatever, or has affirmed that this is their policy instead. To me, that would work. That's just my thought.
I don't think we have a policy. I mean, I'm not a doctor. We don't have a policy, but just something to distance and disassociate. And if, you know, I think that people who follow this kind of know where we're coming from. But since we are getting into that weird territory, I think it's time to start, you know, distancing this board from that, if that's what the board wants.
Just one last thing. I think the press releases are important. At least say, "This is what they recommend. We do not recommend this. Your decision," kind of thing, and put it back in the hands of the people who decide what's available to them out there and whether or not they want to follow through.
So can you come up with a, like a one-sentence disclaimer that would sort of basically say that, you know, that the board recommends that people go and do their own research, whatever you come up with, maybe a couple of choices. But I understand why people are now saying that. I'd say it too.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Angus.
County Manager.
We'll gladly, we'll get together with County Attorney's Office, our PIO and Public Health Director, come up with something, send it to you, just for your prousal and a nod before we plaster it on the press releases. But your point is well taken. We'll come up with something and we'll use it.
And the website, and that's something that the chairman can sign off on, because the chairman signs off on all press releases. I mean, right?
No. Nice try, no.
From the ones that go out from the specific, I mean, except like the sheriff and stuff. Because I remember having to, maybe, of so long.
No, I don't sign off on any of them.
Okay.
Chairman Johnson.
Director Lingefelter.
Director Burley, since we're talking about vaccinations, if I may, I'd like to talk specifically about the COVID-19 response website that's on the Public Health website. When was the last time that was updated? I just went through that this weekend, and it appeared to be, there's some outdated information on there that would indicate maybe it needs to be perhaps re-hauled a little bit to reflect what we currently know now about the virus and ways to battle it. Specifically, what I was looking for is anything on the COVID-19 response website, anything on Mojave County Public Health's social media that covers education on available early treatment options, such as the Regeneron, the monoclonal antibody treatments that are prescribed, administered by medical doctors, by nurse practitioners, that are actually out there. Once somebody gets a diagnosis in the first 10 days, rather than just sitting at home and waiting to go to the hospital, that they can actually do something. And these things have been proven to actually help people to get healthy again. I didn't see any of that information on the Public Health's page. All we hear about is the vaccines. And as we just read, the White House's own Press Secretary, Jen Paskey, you know, she just fully vaccinated, and it's just shown that she has COVID now.
Correct.
So if anything, the vaccines do help to lessen the symptoms. That's what we know, right? Correct?
Correct.
In our most vulnerable. And that's something that's worthy. But they're not a fantasy yet. We have to start educating on early treatment stuff, and I don't see anything on our page. So I think what I'm going to start doing, similar to we have this reoccurring item, I'm going to start putting an agenda item as a report, a new standing report that includes early treatment options and healthy lifestyle choices as a part of a holistic approach to battling future COVID-19 hospitalizations and deaths. I think that that's something that we need to start talking about just as much as the vaccines, because the ultimate goal is reduced hospitalizations and reduced Mojave County citizens dying, and we're not talking about it right now.
So Chairman Johnson, Supervisor Lingefelter, we actually do have information on the monoclonal antibody therapy and the remdesivir on our webpage, on our response hub. So those two specific treatment options, which are EUA-approved by the FDA, are listed and described in on their webpage.
I apologize for not seeing it. Thank you.
That's okay. No worries. No worries. I just wanted to be, to make sure you were aware of that.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, certainly.
Supervisor Bishop.
Denise, the conversation that Supervisor Lingefelter just brought up was the public education and then early treatment and health.
I'm sorry, I wasn't on, wasn't on the microphone. But the conversation that Supervisor Lingefelter just discussed about early treatment and healthy lifestyle choices and education, public education, that's all going to be covered within the new program with the Health and Wellness Van. And perhaps when we advertise that van being available and how it's going to do the outreach, we could include that at the same time, under the same heading, and hopefully, other supervisors will buy into that wellness van for their areas as well. But I think that's, that's an educational area where we are lax, and I think the van and the education that comes with that will shorten that gap.
Certainly, certainly. We also, Supervisor Bishop and Supervisor Lingefelter, just to be clear too, it's important for us to promote the therapies that are out there, and that is a very valid point. I also want to be clear, I guess, that we also don't, we don't diagnose for those treatments. We don't, those are strictly your medical providers. So we want people to be aware of those treatment options and the timeframe, which you need to receive them, and their benefits. But ultimately, those physicians and those people that are screening people coming into their facility, so primarily the hospitals, they're the individuals who are going to determine whether or not those people receive that treatment or something else. So we can do more promotion on our end and try to include more information in our press release, which we just tried to rewrite recently to bring it more current. And what we try to do is drive people to websites where they can get more detailed information as well, because I think, you know, if you're, if we're just forwarding people to a hospital website, they're getting just one piece of that. And certainly, we want people to be aware of where else they can research that type of treatment if they needed to.
I appreciate that. I think certainly, that's my personal view, that all available therapies and treatments, those are things that individuals are, should be talking about and making decisions on with their primary care physician, with their family's primary care physician. You're not diagnosing or prescribing anything. You're just saying, "We want to make sure that you're aware of not only the vaccines that we've been talking about for well over a year now and where to get those." But, you know, on the same level of footing, the early treatment things. Because right now, you know, there might be some people, they get their paper that says, "Hey, you have COVID in for the 10 days." They just go home, and they just sit there. And how many of those people are going to the hospital, and then how many of those people are dying? I think we have an obligation to everybody to do everything that we can to prevent hospitalizations and deaths. And certainly, the more data that we have, I mean, I've spoken to several nurse practitioners, several physicians in Mojave County that are treating patients with this stuff successfully. And I think that we need to educate on that just as much as the vaccines. That's my opinion. Thank you.
Certainly.
I personally think we go down a slippery slope if we start putting in disclaimers. You have the Health Department that puts out a press release that says CDC recommends this, who basically are the ones that give that information out to the United States. That's the official person that does it. If Mojave County, five people sitting here who none have degrees in being doctors or anything, that I know of, I don't know, maybe they do. But if we start putting in disclaimers, now you're going to throw in another, another point of view that I think could lead to trouble, because now if I read the press release and I go, "Oh, that says here, the CDC says I should get my child vaccinated at five to 11," or "See my doctor to find out if I should get the child vaccinated." Then I see the Board of Supervisors says, "We're not, have nothing to do with this." I think it's confusing, and then I wouldn't want people saying, "Well, the Board of Supervisors said not to get it." And I agree with you, people, that I think it's a family decision. If I had a five to 11-year-old, I would be looking at it very seriously and checking with my doctor. But if we do it here, are we going to do it for flu shots? Now we think that flu shots maybe are, we're not recommending those. When Latauski brings us something on roads and says the Federal Traffic Control Commission says something, we go, "Yeah, we don't think you should have to go 65 or something." I just think the way we do it, if we make sure that we say the CDC recommends this or whoever does it, because our Health Department, I mean, they'll recommend healthy eating, they'll recommend losing weight, they'll recommend, you know, you see your doctor, but we don't tell people to get any kind of medical treatment. I mean, that's not our job. Our job is only to put out the facts, whether we agree with what CDC says or any of those people. We just pass it down because in the food chain, we're pretty far down. That's just mine. I mean, if we're going to do it, then I'd rather have a vote to say we're going to put it in there.
Chairman Johnson?
Sure.
I understand your points. Well taken. But something just very general. And I think it could be done if you put your heads together and our PIO, when we're getting into these sorts of things. I know we say the CDC, but it does. I think the perception is, if it's on our website, that we all sort of, I'm not going to say agree with it, but do you think there's just something, you can put some things, and maybe Supervisor, Chairman Johnson, it would be kind of overall vague enough to appeal to everyone on the board? Okay.
Chairman Johnson.
Supervisor Bishop.
I think we're opening a can of worms that we may not want to open the county up to any liabilities, that if somebody gets COVID because they didn't get the vaccine based on our disclaimer, I think we could be held partially responsible, and I don't know if it could win in a lawsuit, but it could certainly muddy the waters and get our attorneys involved. So if these are CDC recommendations, and we're not saying they're Mojave County recommendations, I don't see where we need to have a disclaimer, because the board is clearly divided on this and always has been since the beginning. So how can we do a disclaimer for the board when the board is not unified?
Sort of by that logic, if people take the CDC's advice and do, get vaccinated, whatever, and something happens, they die, they would be open for lawsuit. Oh, wait, they're immune from lawsuits. So, you know, if you're going to go that into it. But again, I just threw this out to the board if it's something you want to do, but I want it on the record that this is just CDC, and as these, I think these things are coming out now faster, it's getting to a point of, in my opinion, absurdity, and I just don't want to be associated with it. And I understand where you come from too, and that's why I said in the beginning that you are part of the whole public health arena, and that you're just getting your information and putting it out there.
Thank you, Supervisor Angus.
And Supervisor Gould.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm curious why we have to put out repeat press releases of what the CDC is already going to put out anyway. They put it out anyway. They've already, the wire service picks up their article. I don't know, I think it's somewhat redundant if we make, pass their press release out also. I just don't see the point of putting out the CDC's press release.
I think if they just add it to our press releases that we have, and it's, while it is redundant and we get hit with it a lot, I think if people haven't just looked our Health Department, they don't see it there, you know, even though it's been out there like anything else, you're picking and choosing. It's just part of that press release, I think. Maybe if they did bigger bolding and said, you know, because I didn't pick up on it, I mean, I noticed we had in the press release that this is going to happen, you know, it looked to happen, and CDC recommends it. Maybe bolder letters with CDC recommendations, you know, because I don't take it, at least when I read it, that Mojave County is saying, "You need this or you need that." We're just pushing down, you know, like we would for anything else, you know.
I think there is somewhat of an approval, though, if we're going to, we're going to take something that somebody else has sent us, and then we're going to put it on our website, and we're going to send it out to the press. I think that's complicit approval of that. You know, I don't see why we have to send or pass along the CDC's press releases. They can do that fine. Thank you.
I guess what would we do with our Health Department then? I mean, they have to pass down something, because they're not the ones making the rules or anything else.
Yeah, but they're dealing with the health that's inside and the issues that's inside the county. They're not, we're not a news outlet for the CDC if the CDC wants to do something. I don't know that that's their mission. I think their mission is to watch the health of the people in the county, not necessarily pass along whatever the CDC comes up with this week.
I guess, well, we probably all have a discrepancy and disapproval of the CDC at this point now. But I'm guessing, you know, as a county facility who has the Health Department, who gets federally funded, you know, for the majority of their money, and looks to the CDC for guidance, whether that's the best guidance or not, that's the guidance that we have in our chain of command. I don't know any other way we could do it. If we started not putting in what the CDC recommends, would we do it for all things or just COVID? So I think that's where we get into a problem. If we just put down, I mean, because this one issue that we're talking about today is the five through elevens. So if we left it out, now we, I don't know that it would make a difference. It did say CDC recommend, there's going to be recommending, I think, where you worded it in the last one.
I don't think the CDC has any authority over the state anyway. Under the separation of powers.
Well, I think they go through the...
I think we whore ourselves out by taking federal money, and then we somehow feel that then we have to bow to what they say. But we're a creature of the state. We're not a creature of the federal government.
Mr. Chairman.
County Manager. Been beating the dead horse, though.
Mr. Chairman and board members, we understand, I think, that the CDC is the source of information on these medical issues and understanding that our county residents have different needs and different perspectives. We try to summarize the information. I'm not really sure that the CDC format... not really sure that the CDC format of info is simplified enough where our residents can digest it. So we, we package the information and put it out just to help our residents have access to it. We, we do all we can to not be biased one way or the other. Our county residents have, you know, a widespread of perspectives. Some need it, some don't care for it, some in between. So the intent is to disseminate the info. And often enough, the local papers will pick it up, and they will reprint it. So it's out there for our residents to see. We, we try, and judging by the discussion, we perhaps need to be even more vigilant to not endorse anything, but just to disseminate info. So that's, that's what we perceive our role to be and what we strive to do. Again, if directed otherwise, we'll do, we'll do what the board directs us. But that's really our, that's our mission as we see it.
Nothing else? I guess we'll continue this letter of support for Dr. Fauci?
All right, we're done.